It's 6 o'clock. I'd call if you need to order. First order of business, like the lead.
I would like to leave this to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business on the agenda here is not on the agenda, but I think I have a moment amid the silence for the state representative Melissa Hartwood and Liz Johnson with Lincoln and also Martin Hoffman. It's a tragic thing that happens that people can't settle their differences, that they have to take violence to types of extremists that they so hopefully we can all citizens of the United States and citizens of the world, we respect somebody else's opinion whether you like it or not, you still can respect it. You don't have to turn to violence like that to prove a point, I guess. Tragic. Well, next order of business is to approve tonight's agenda?
No.
You just the vacations.
Oh, we're doing the vacations first then. Okay. So we have an occasion for two vacations. One is from the four pos. Four pos, yeah, four pos. And we're taking one at a time, so I guess if you want to come forward with that. I guess for everybody, information is property and owns property on both sides of the alleyway is requesting vacation for that.
Yep.
And there's the land owner behind the property still have access to another company right of way, so nobody being excluded during the day, so there's always access to the property behind it. And so with that said, I guess, is there anything you'd like to say then?
Nope, just, you know, I got a picture of what where I want it vacated and because I own on both sides of the alleyway, kind of go from there, so for future.
The Platted Street.
What?
It's the Platted Street.
Platted Street, yep. Yeah, it'd be 5th Street here, but I'd like to have the alley vacated between 16th, section 16 and 30 on this, so.
Okay, we coming again?
I mean, as long as the parcel behind it looks like has it access through the county, the county line.
Yep, there's, yep, do you guys have the picture of actually Platted?
I've got this one right here.
Okay, yeah, there is.
And this one too.
Yep, there's one, two, three different ways other than that to get to the property.
Well, the only thing that my concern when we talked about this a couple of months ago was that we could not accept the vacation into us to exclude access to another property, but obviously there's other other entrances to the other properties.
Yep, three different ways.
There's no extra cost or anything else like that. They're all the same issue to get into it. With that said, any motion?
I would make a motion for to vacate the street.
Motion is second in all favor.
I can.
Oh, so carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next would be the vacation request that was Karina who submitted it.
Thank you. Yeah, we're so we're making a motion to request 10 feet on each side of our street, of Main Street. So as a neighborhood, we feel the right of way of Main Street is unnecessarily wide at 80 feet. Spruce Street, our main thoroughfare, is 70 feet right of way. And I did some research and most metropolitan areas in major cities, including Minneapolis, your residential streets have a 60-foot right of way. Two of the houses in our neighborhood, plus multiple flower gardens, other residential improvements are in direct conflict with this current easement. And adjusting the easement would increase the property taxes, which the city would benefit, while protecting the property owners from overdevelopment in the neighborhood.
One thing I want to say, that I walk that street today, the flower gardens in, as you mentioned, both are probably 40 feet within the right of way, so 10 feet wouldn't correct, you know, correct or be part of that solution.
Understandable, but the front five feet of my house that I bought in 2016, that I didn't realize because it never occurred to me that my house would actually be on a city right of way. And I know I should have done my due diligence as a property owner, but I was trying to open a restaurant at the time, which was kind of my main goal going through that. And now I find out that the front five feet of my house, due to nothing that I did, is actually on the city right of way, which does make it so that if there is development, that it's so close to my front of my house that I could have parking. I mean, we saw the parking plans that were proposed a couple of years ago and where it would be literally my front door would touch a car if it opened up. So asking for the 10 feet would put my front five feet of my house actually on my property and five feet after that. So at least if I opened my front door, it wouldn't get blown off by a car that was speeding by. So reducing our road to 60 feet is the regular residential right of way for most cities.
I remember Jill Sutherland drew up those plans that we're referring to, but I think the maximum county right of way is 60, 60 with sidewalks. So I don't need to be five feet from your door, but it gives my 80 foot right of way, 40 feet in each direction. Obviously, it should be 30 feet, so, you know, 60 foot, so. But I realize that's probably our light, that is probably our lightest right of way in this town. I don't know if we have anything that.
I'm not positive that it's a non.
Pardon me?
I'm not, I'm not positive that it's a non.
Yeah.
I'm not either, but I'm pretty sure that it is. I don't think I found another street in Rainier that was 80 feet.
Most county right of ways are 60, 60.
Yeah. Well, I did for metropolitan city streets, like in Minneapolis, they were 60 feet. Like where Robert and I used to live in our neighborhood in Uptown, that was 60 feet. So I'm just using this as a residential neighborhood example of 60 feet is what they plan for Minneapolis, St. Paul, other cities.
Well, obviously, your neighborhood, your other neighbors are.
Everyone that has signed our vacation request is in agreeance with it as far as I know at this time.
What is, what is that all, 100%, 80%, 20%?
Let's see, one, that's 80% or 85%?
You mean of the correct number of property owners signing petition, is that?
Yeah, because we have six houses, there's the seventh person is not in agreeance. But we didn't, we also didn't include their property in the vacation request. It would have just been our whole side of the street, my parents, us, Paul Jones, Jean Kelly on our side, and then Heinley's and Halloway's on the other side. So we didn't, we didn't add them to the request per their request. So we're not asking to vacate their part of the road. We're just asking to vacate our part of the road so we can put our homes back on our property.
So I guess where you are asking just for the south side of the road now, 10 feet on this south side?
We have included 10 feet of Halloway and Heinley's.
And now you included the west or the north side house?
Just on the one end by the park.
Just on the one end by the park. Yeah.
And if anyone has anything they'd like to add.
Well, okay, obviously.
Yeah, I believe that Lewis Street is either 80 or 90 feet wide. Just disagree.
Yeah, it could be, but I'm just saying that it's an extremely wrong right of way. I didn't know that.
I understand why they want this, and I have no objection to it. However, I do want to point out that everybody that lives in Old Rainier, with rare exception, is mowing lawns that do not belong to them, they belong to the city. So this isn't the only place where, you know, I mean, it's wherever you go in Old Rainier, I think we perhaps might be an exception because we have a sidewalk or, you know.
And Rainier, Old Rainier, as you call it, is well known for the strange way in which the lots are aligned. And the only option for those people is to purchase the lot next to them when it comes up for sale, to write the lot lines in a more standardized way. And, you know, I understand that there's a lot that goes into making or asking for this, but there's part of me that feels like it's not wrong in the city to try to fix issues that a generation brought on because they can't purchase the property from us. So that would be just the one input that I would have on trying to write, you know, whether or not a buyer knows beforehand or should know beforehand what they're purchasing. You know, I know someone whose neighbor sold them 10 feet of property so that their lot would be more aligned where their debt was, but these residents don't really have that option because it's, you know, a city street.
And there has been a survey that is clearly stating with property?
We have had our property surveyed, so.
Has everybody had their property surveyed or whatever?
When we did that, when we did that street, proposed street project, there was, there was a survey down there and, you know, basically the street was laid, the street was laid out, you know, I think it was a 60-foot street with sidewalk on one side, and there was plenty of room for it. And it was still, you know, probably the biggest city we'd ever built. I'm sure of that, I know it's. You certainly can't, Mary Ann, like, older than Mary Ann.
Mary Ann Kasek, 3487 Main Street. Can you speak into the microphone, please? Sure. And your microphone doesn't sound as well good either. Your microphone doesn't sound like totally, I couldn't hear you very much. Okay. Anyway, Mary Ann Kasek, 3487 Main Street. Okay, first of all, I want to say that this is nothing personal with my neighbors. It's just philosophy that I have and something that I'm going to speak to and then I will have a conclusion. I understand what she's saying about shorter roads in Minneapolis and St. Paul. This is not Minneapolis and St. Paul. I, I have, my main concern is with the Rainier Park. The Rainier Park, if you were to look at the information that I was given, you know, on the Google map and everything, the Rainier Park, you can't really tell how large it is when you go down there. I have no idea what the size of the Rainier Park is. But when you look at the Google, Google map, Heinley's, who own 50 percent, 50 feet, part of the Rainier Park is actually in, in front of 25 feet of their property. But you would never know that because it's, it's used as part of their driveway and also there's a lot of greenery and stuff. So if you were to look at Google maps, you would see that the park is 25 feet into their property.
We will get to it, but just let her.
Bring your park, Mary Ann. Bring your park to me, someone, like, tell you about Shell Place?
Yes, Shell Place Park. Thank you for the correction. I was referring to the park over by us. Okay. So anyway, so anyway, I guess what I'm feeling is that the park is really important for the future of Rainier. I feel that there is not a lot of parking. If you come down on our street, you go up the hill and it goes from 80 feet, but it's just like drastically narrowed to barely two cars nearby each other. And that's because over the years, the beautiful greenery has evolved. And I love the greenery and the trees, but there just isn't a lot of room for parking. Like if two people, two families want to visit the park, there's really not many places to get down there and park. And so I guess as far as the other people, I, when Karina approached me about vacations, I said no, because I really don't believe in a lot of vacations. I think that you have to really scrutinize. And I don't think that we should be rewarding for past mistakes, that it's time to just move forward. But the most important thing to me is the Rainier, the Shell Road Park. And I would like to see this action tabled until the council themselves can do some research on the park and determine exactly what, where it is and what needs to be done. Because on Heinley's, if you were to give 10, 10 feet, I don't know, that just, you know, you don't even know where the lines are. But I know from being a kid pretty much where the lines are. And I agree that 80 feet might be a little wide, but again, I think it should all really be scrutinized before a decision is made, especially the park.
Not knowing where the lines are, from where you understand them to be, you're concerned that access would be completely cut off to the park itself?
It feels like, it feels to me like there's been a discouragement of using the park. Now, I realize that in our area, we are residential, except for in the past, recent past, it has been used for food trucks. It has been used for, it's used for C N all the time, so it's not truly super residential. And when business is at the grill again, it will resume. And so we're not truly a super residential area. And I want to know that some people, Rainier, everybody Rainier doesn't have lakefront property. I want to make sure that some of those people can go down to that beautiful little park and have a little picnic and sit on the waterfront. And so before any decisions are made about these things, I would really like to have some more study made in that direction.
A little food, I don't know if you attended the meeting that we had at the C N and their building representative?
No.
That was, I think, gentlemen, there were quite a few of the people here. But we were going to, one of our demands, I guess, you call it, or one of the things, we were going to make that a one-way street out so that the railroad people could not come out there. The entrance to the railroad depot would be, I'm going to give my direction, west of the street right of way, so that they couldn't come out onto that street. And I actually used that street as a thoroughfare, so they will have to go up and down on the tracks. So that's one thing we did and told him that we had, and he didn't see no problem with that because the access he had going into the depot was coming off just beyond the curve, you know, between the curve and the section I was there. And so we told him we wanted that moved so it's west of the right of way, so that they have to use that. And then we made a one-way traffic so that they can't come on down. So that was one, one thing we did. Another thing that I.
Hold on a second, I have a question. So are you telling me that currently it's a one-way?
No, it's going to be.
When, when will that happen? Pardon? When is that slated for?
Excuse me?
Order, please.
Go ahead.
What is that, when is the date of that, that supposed to take place?
We, we, they're coming back to us because there's a lot of things. There is downlighting, static lighting, retaining walls. There were multiple things. That was just one of the things that we addressed in that. Anyway, the architect took that back, filed a lot of those things into their proposed plan that they were coming back to us with. So that's good to happen, eventually, whenever they.
So let me ask you a question then. When the business resumes that Rainier Grill, if it resumes in the future, then how are those people going to get around and about? Like if there's trucks coming through, how are they going to, how are they going to go around? They should be able to have access, I think. That's my personal opinion.
They will have access. They will be access.
If you have.
Are you talking about if it was a one-way?
Yeah, if it's a one-way, okay, they'll just start that way and come out the other side.
Why, they come inside and go over, go around. I mean, we just don't want the people coming from the railroad depot turning and going through the residential area.
All right.
And that's what the council is deciding, and it was a really good idea. I don't think it's going to affect Rainier Grill one way because they're going to have access on, you know, when the old depot will move, there'll be an approach on that side for that whole road. We'll get to you.
But back to the, to the main issue for me is, is like the park, and I, and I would like you to table it until you have.
Well, I brought that up just to show you what we had intended on that thing. Also, on either side of that corner, which, okay, on either side of the corner, that's always been cut short. People are cutting short with the trailer, mainly the railroad people. But they cut short, so I've mentioned it several times to our maintenance manager that basically 10 feet of that inside corner should be, you know, excavated out, the black dirt and that inside of that corner, that, that road is not where it's, where it's supposed to be plotted. That road is actually supposed to be farther west if you really look at the plot map, but it's been, been there for years. So anyway, the inside of the corner, I mentioned to them multiple times, and we go to address that, that we're going to excavate that out and install crushed rock on that inside corner because every spring I just rut it out and turned around and turned into a mess. So in regards to your, I see you have, you know, an issue here. You'd like to see some parking so that people that want to enjoy the park or see the park, basically the street's so narrow that they couldn't, unless they park in the middle of the road, there's no access. I mean, even though it's city property. And so, you know, I know, and it is city property, so I'd like to see us build a 10-foot wide parking lane up to the top of the hill.
Top of the hill.
Yeah, well, I know, we've talked about it several times. This is the first time. And she mentioned that the need for parking, because on the other side, obviously, there's trees, Heinley's yard. This one here is, it's all city property, but it's, the corner should be fixed up anyway. So if they were to fill that corner and take it to basically the top of the hill to where the new pavement is, basically, there's nothing in the way there. So then that would add, you know, vertical parking for probably four, five cars, I forget the distance exactly. But that's one thing that we've talked about several times. Actually, within the design on that proposal of that road that we proposed there, there was, I believe there was, so half horizontal parking on that side.
Yeah.
Half parking on the other side or something like that. So that's something that we're still looking at and probably should be done. It might help your situation as far as your, your need or your thoughts for parking for the park.
I do agree with them that, you know, we want to keep it residential feeling. And so just by, by doing the park, but making it more inviting to people, it still fits in with the residential feel.
Karina, we'll get to you. Everybody's got some questions. So we're going to take time and there'll be comments and all this stuff.
And so, but anyway, I'm just asking for you to please table it so we can do some, some more research on that park area and see what kind of an issue or, you know, a plan.
So you're concerned that vacating that north side 10 feet will prevent people access, is what you're concerned?
Pretty much that, yes. And because the, the lines have just gotten so.
So this, this plot right here that I'm looking at, I don't see 11 listed, and that's the one that's right next to.
To the park.
So, so I, if it, if it's not included, it shouldn't affect access to this park. There's not a lot of space to begin with. You kind of have to walk there, park kind of walkie to begin with. It's not, it's not super accessible. It's kind of a hidden gem.
Right.
There's a tree, there's a lady on the street there.
Right. Right, right.
I believe there's a power pole right here also, right? Are there power poles, are they on the property?
The power lines are, have to be city property, you know, the power.
Yeah, not necessarily, but they're, they're basically on the property.
Pretty much.
Yes, basically.
Yeah. So there's like two power poles, one here, one somewhere down here, like, there's also something, one going right through the trees, the power line.
I, because I already share your concerns about access to the park, but from what I'm looking at here, I don't see that that would necessarily be a huge issue. I mean, it looks like you're looking at what I'm looking at, so I'm trying to make sure we're seeing the same thing. Because I want, if there's a vacation request that's going to prevent someone getting access to a public park on the waterfront, obviously that would be a huge deal. But from what I'm looking at, I'm not seeing that that's something that would be prevented for someone who wants to use it. Just from what I, just from what I'm looking at.
Well, again, I, lines are not very clear about where, when you're coming down, even on the, even if it was the 10 feet were given, it's not very clear where those lines are on the street. You know, I think they go into a lot of the greenery on the right-hand side from my house, if you look, you know, if you look down the street. And I just, I just think more, more attention should be given to a vacation in such an area where there's a Rainier Park, a C N coming in, and residential, and business on the other side. That's just my opinion. So thank you. Please consider it.
Okay, multiple hands up, I guess. Chris, you would take your first.
Well, I just have, because I'm not in the park, I'll just go on the park. Can the city vacate the 10 feet also along the park so that it would become city property, not going property? I mean, it's all city property, but like, along the road, yeah.
Chris, will you, will you come up and speak?
I don't think that'd be necessary, Chris, because it's city property. The road is actually, the existing road is actually lies east of where it's supposed to be plotted. I mean, it's, I think it must be on some of your property. Well, it's still city property, but it's not where it shows on, on the map. You know, if you got a city book right of way, it's way over on the east side.
I'm just thinking that if you actually vacated that and made an apartment with the park, if you're vacating the 10 feet on the north side, it would just extend right down. It would, it would actually be official park. It wouldn't be road right of way. I don't know if that would help at all.
Yeah, I don't, I see what you're trying to say. Is the road right of way, whatever that distance is of the road right of way where it goes around the corner, if it's a, oh boy, it don't.
Technically, that would.
It don't show, it, it, you know, don't. Yeah, it don't show a light. That is obviously ain't 80 feet. It's a.
I'm just thinking that technically, the park, it wouldn't be road right of way for the park, it wouldn't be official park.
Well, I see there's a few things considered, but in, in first reserve of the park, I think that that can be done. I think our bigger problem would be to make sure that the railroad, Charles, you were at the meeting too, that the retaining wall and everything else like that is put in correctly so that, you know, Mary Ann, you wondered where the park lines were. That was one thing I probably should have brought up when you were here. At the meeting with the architect that's designing the blueprint for the new depot, there's a retaining wall. It's, shoot, I think it would be about 10 feet high on their lake side. And then they're going to continue south, which is that property line that you're looking for where the edge of the park is. And so the park line will be defined on that side, on the, you know, on our side, you know, it'll be defined with, with the road right of way or whatever you do, but certainly it'll be defined. So that, that'll clarify where the park is and all that. Because they're going to build right on the border, right up to the corner of their property and then go 90 degrees each way. So that, that will show that. I also did take time. Uh, I also did take time and we've mentioned this a couple of times, that willow tree, I believe that's, is that on, um, Barnes's old property? That property? Yeah, I looked at it today, I thought it was dead. You know, 20 years ago, I thought it was dead and it's alive, it recovered. I don't know if it's been given at Charles, but whatever you give it, it'll peak somewhere. Because it, it's, it's healthy, it's health, you know, it, it could use, it certainly could use some pruning because some of the, the lead branches, I mean, are actually in the street right now. So I think I meant, Jen, I think I mentioned that just at the last meeting and Nick should probably go down there and look and see it's, because they're actually, it's a narrow street anyway, but there's a thing into the, sticking into the street a little bit, so they probably should be pruned up, at least, at least the bottom eight footers, you know, something like that.
Um, just a direct, direct question to, like, Marianne was asking for this to be tabled until we know for sure that entry and exit to the city park is assured to the general public. Is that something that we can guarantee that we know now? If we wanted to give, give what the property owners are asking for, are, are we in, in direct assurance that we know that entry and exit to that park, it will, will not be impeded? That's my question. Because if it is, we should find that out and table it and then make adjustments or if we feel that the survey that was done for the recent CN stuff, I, I just, I don't know what the rush is if we're not sure and can't answer that question. That's all I would say is, I don't have a problem tabling it if that's something we want to reassure it as long as there is nothing screwy, we can go forward and, and put this back on and what process we have to follow, if we have to publish that and wait another 10 days or however many days it is for.
Even with the vacation, there would still be 60 feet of right away down the middle before it makes a corner. So I mean, I know there's, I mean, that, you were asking if there'd be access, there is access.
Okay.
But I think the Heinrichs are probably, uh, they have their flower garden, a big spuce tree, they're probably 30 feet into the right away.
Right.
Uh, at a minimum. Paul, you've got flowers right out, your house is in the right way. I forgot the flowers. And so there's a lot of intrusion on the right of the territory.
I mean, I will say, all right, from my perspective, I support if the city of Goodwill can help rectify some of these property line issues as long as we're in accordance with some standardized street measurement. I, I would support that again, but if there is a question about access to the lakefront park, like, I want to make sure that we know the measurements involved there with, and know for sure. I, I, and you're saying that there is, but.
I agree with you, Jen.
Okay.
I don't think we need to step back for a minute. Go ahead, you go.
I, I know part of the realities of this situation because I'm in the inside corners. And the reality of the situation right now is that people do use that park and they do park on the side of the park. They just sort of walk the road. My other concern is that, um, my observation is that there are large amounts of, of tourists in town now who walk that circle. And what is going to happen then? If, if, I mean, they like to walk that circle, they stop in the park and then they continue on. Um, my concern is the increase in traffic and big trucks and stuff. Um, I suppose we're going to have to thumb our house at the doors so I can walk down there. Is that it?
The one question I have for you Jen, because we discussed that, you know, that inside the corner, the way that inside the corner and you know that gets rutted up, I think it makes sense to do what I, I suggested, that we go, you know, take the inside of the corner, fill it in with crushed rock for 10 feet and continue up the hill towards Paul's, always.
Yeah, that's true.
And, and that'd be right in front of you would be the most effective, would be the only effective, uh, property owner because the pulse on top of the hill would be maybe a little bit in front of his place, but not, not very much.
Uh, from the plans that we were shown before, it would cut off a corner of my guest house and it would take the road right up to Paul's front door.
Yeah, that was the plan. They, they got rejected.
Okay.
I mean, they got rejected. I'm just talking, uh, Marianne's concern was there was no parking for the park and things like that. So this 10 foot on, from the blacktop, the existing blacktop and going in towards her home, 10 feet, there would be, uh, you know, crushed rock park, yeah, crushed rock. And that, that would stabilize that corner, which is a mudhole everywhere all the time. And then there'd be, uh, you know, if somebody wanted to park in the park, I mean, either that or they're parking in your yard right now or Heinrich's yard or they drive residents in the park.
Those, those guys that like to go fishing over there?
Pardon me?
There's a lot of guys that like to go fishing over there. And, um, it's a good spot. Oh, I probably shouldn't tell you, but. But, um, they just kind of pull off into the park behind, you know, there's a memorial that's there and they, they just pull off the road and there's the, at least three.
Well, that's what we're saying, they're pulling off the road. If they're going to pull off the road, they may as well pull off and it's stabilized.
Also.
Uh, it is a big expense for the company or for the city and also, uh, that was something we talked about before, maybe we'll pursue it in that. So, and Charles, we'll get Charles and we'll get you.
So I'm Charles S. Lloyd and, and Chris and I have Arden Barnes' old property there. And if you look at the oldest pictures I've ever seen of Rainier, the one, uh, castment block building there, the little garage is on the, the oldest pictures I've ever seen. So that's been there a real long time. Uh, and of course, Arden's two houses are more current, but in keeping with what you were saying, Jen, I believe if we vacated 10 feet there, then, um, it, it would meet our current setup. So those buildings which now, I mean, they're grandfathered in, but they're too close to the right away. And if we had 10 feet, then those buildings would be correct. Um, and, and they'd have a proper setback. Uh, and I think that's, uh, does clean things up. Uh, so I think that, in my mind, that speaks for saying, yeah, this is a practical thing to do. And, and relative to the park access, I think from a concept standpoint, right now, we have an 80-foot wide swath that goes, runs right into the park. Then we'd have, if we do this, we'll have a 60-foot wide a, access running straight to the park. And I think 60 feet is plenty of room to do a number of nice things to accommodate what we're talking about, parking and, and walking and all that kind of stuff. Uh, so I speak in, in favor. I think it would be a good thing to do. I, I, from a concept standpoint, I don't see that reducing the access to the park area from 80 feet to 60 really, it doesn't restrict us much, yeah.
Bert, you have your hand.
Now, part of my question was exactly what you talked about. Is this vacated so these people's property are no longer on city property or is it going to affect any future that the city wants to do with the road by parking or events, parking for residential, parking for the park? Is that going to affect that?
Well, like I said, uh, I do know that the street design that was designed by, um, Woodson Smith and Nolte, that was, you know, all compliant to the widest streets you could do or it had a side, one side, it was, it was roughly 60 feet wide at the book. It was to decrease parking, you know, the horizontal vertical parking on one side, horizontal on the other. And, uh, and I can't see us ever developing beyond that design that was there. Uh, and I think that always, I don't have the plans in front of me, but I don't think it was greater than 60 feet.
So that was still a lot?
Yeah, it, it didn't happen, so I don't, you know, I don't know, but now parking is a little issue and I can understand why because I can see they're pulling up on yearly on, I see tracks there all the time. And so I think we have maybe a, a solution for that, at least for a few cars. But, um, and then also, again, them, them trees there, I guess with, with the little pruning on the branches on the outside, that would improve, that would improve visibility to the, you know, if you want to look down the street towards the park without, we're pretty fussy about taking out the trees here, so, uh, and, you know, that is probably one of the reasons that, to keep it for some reason that vehicle, you know, the small town field, some of the tree rates on the street, there's going to be some brackal be there too. So, uh, those things are going to happen. Just to let you know, if something, you see them putting prunes on them trees, the tree's not coming down, but there's going to be some branches coming off the roadside of the, so the car can pass hundreds of acres in a, in Canada or something. Uh, whether, whether we vacate or not, that's, that's, that's some things that's going to happen. Paul?
Yeah, quick, I'll be very brief. Uh, first, with the park, that we got to repair that deck and something before somebody gets hurt. It wouldn't take long, it's just got to be moved over. Couple guys with pipe poles fixing the ramp, which I did before it flooded and that got wrecked. Uh, the road width thing, I'll go way back. In the 60s, you saw it there as a kid, that was always a skinny, narrow, little gravel covered, dusty road. And it's about the same width except we got it tarred.
Another point, and I did a lot of research on this with a lot of help. One has to remember when we talk about CN, talk about any railroad, they only have three concerns, me, myself and I. And I can show you research, the amount of small towns that CN has gone through destroyed them. Keep it in mind, they'll sell you a bill of goods. I wouldn't turn my back on them now. And, uh, back to the point of vacation is, everybody in the area has been maintaining city property, beautifying it and all that. So then what, we're just supposed to give it away or can we keep it? It's a nice idea. I know.
Robert Ham, a resident at 3048 Main Street. Thank you everybody for their time today, even the people I disagree with. Um, the main goal here today is just to try to get the books straight, kind of get some of our properties, our houses out of the, of the easements. We don't want to restrict access to the park. I think it'd be great if there was a sidewalk on one side or both sides of that street to allow people to expand out and stretch their legs a little more. Right now, we've got people that are walking down the middle of the street to go use that park. So I agree that access is a problem, especially for pedestrians. We got a pedestrian-friendly community. I think that this easement could be accommodated and still provide access to the park if that's the greatest concern to the easement. I don't think that's a problem. I think there's something that can be done. I think a lot of people are really invested in that little chunk of road, so. It's really I have to say, but thank you for your time.
Yeah, I have a question. You know, you say access to the park, sidewalks on both sides. Question, what's your mindset then for not wanting that road with the sidewalks and new pavement and?
I was overridden.
Huh?
I was overridden, that's why I didn't participate in the meetings. We voted as a neighborhood about whether or not to go forward with any of the parking solutions that we discussed. I was overridden and was not meant in a place to participate in those meetings.
All right. Um, you got anybody else? This is a good meeting, anyway. Um, okay. We've heard all the side stories here, uh, basically knowing the main concern is that we keep access to the park, obviously, a little parking issue, uh, keeping, you know, the residential feel, you know, these concerns. If it can be done without restricting access to the park, we really don't have a problem. That's where we probably take sure you have access to the park. And like you say, move the road from the east to the west, is that what you want to do on that corner? I think that's, we, we should do that anyway, whether, there's a vacate or not because it's tore up every year and, and then that does allow some parking at the park. But if we're not going to build a new road there, which was already built down, they didn't want the road, so, uh, you know, so now if you want some parking for it, that would be the minimum we could do without a, without an issue, I mean, without a cost really, minimum cost. Uh, any other comments?
No, I, I don't have issues with kind of writing the generational issues with some of the lots that we have here and maintaining or maybe putting some TLC into, I mean, it's a good pin, it's a good pin in it to focus on that little corner because it's a forgotten little gem, but, you know, we're hearing that it's not going to impede access to that, then I am in support of writing some of the dysfunctional lots that we have here. And I don't see that as a, as, as something that does harm to the public and I've been sure most of my life and I, we've vacated things for lesser reasons and I think that this is purposeful. So that's just my feedback and the intention of what I would obviously support is obvious, so.
Again, I'd like to mention a couple of things. First of all, uh, these problems, you know, as far as right ways and people built on right ways or houses were built years ago on right ways or exits. And after officials gave people to build on their property and allowed this to go on and stuff. Uh, and, and I agree with the, they left the problem, there's all kinds of people that mow city property and maintain it and I appreciate that. Hell, we mow, we mow state dips to make our community look better, so I have no issue with that. Um, so it just happens, you know, I mean, I take pride in the community. Uh, the one thing, uh, and again, Marianne, you were at that meeting, the CN is going to put a stone wall, they were going to, it's going to be a stone wall and then it's going to turn and it's going to be a, we, we correct question if it's going to be a block wall, it'd be least aesthetic block, it ain't going to be cinder blocks or stuff like that. The architect sees, and he was drawing the plans in, which the CMs just take the plans, they hire people to do them. So I feel real confident, I know Paul said you worry about the CN and the railroad, but they take plans from their design engineers and architects and say, this is what we're building. And, uh, you know, to change the color of the rock and all that stuff. He literally said that, that's not an issue. I mean, that will, it could happen. So we just have to monitor for, we do have to monitor that issue to make sure it follows, you know, don't get too far along. So anyway, then, uh, so I think we've addressed all, everybody and everybody had a chance to see what they wanted to see. Do we want to table this? Do we want to make a motion to accept it or deny it? Board's open.
Let's make a motion and then we accept it.
We have a motion to accept it, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie? All right, uh, let's go on to our council meeting now. Uh, let's see where we are. Did we approve tonight's agenda? Get a motion to accept tonight's agenda.
You guys have your rights, please we can.
I'll make, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, thank you for, I'll make a motion to accept tonight's agenda, second. We have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, you approved the May 2025th claims list? Any issues on any, any claims, any questions? Get a motion. Do we approve the minutes of the May 20th, 2025, conference?
I'll make that one.
Paul's second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, do you approve the May 2025 claims list? Any issues on any claims, any questions? Get a motion, please.
I'll make that motion. Paul's second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, to accept the disbursement, ledgers, and financial statements of various funds from the May 31st, 2025?
I'll make that motion.
Paul's second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, to approve resolution 2025-04 to authorize application for capital bonding for the city maintenance shop?
I'll make that motion.
Paul's second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, to approve resolution 2025-05 to authorize application for 2026 bonding bill for the Pier project?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
To accept with gratitude the $4,000 donation from Rainier Record Bumps?
That's motion. Paul's second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, to accept the May 2025 litigance or operating statement?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, to approve and deny recommendations for Rainier Land Use and Planning Commission?
Dennis. Next here.
Hey, everybody.
What do you got?
No more water breaks.
Did you have that vinyl gravel off your estate, Rainier, or did you have that delivered?
No, we had that delivered.
So you maintained it from time to time if you?
Yeah, I have to dump a little extra, because it seems to kind of blow out of there.
Got it. I had a chance to talk to the maintenance officer, and he said he would give back to me if, you know, we had plenty of black dollars in town, so you let settle and then consider to prepare. Okay, so I'm trying to stay to do that.
Yeah.
You have to forward name with them so much.
Yeah.
With the traffic and the conditions and all this. What else you got?
No real big issues. Everything's going pretty good so far.
Question?
Jen?
Yeah, just a side thing. Do we have dirt and mulch, like, a supply of it anywhere?
Black dirt or fill?
I, we had some trees planted last year along the boat launch, and like, the top of it is above the base level of the soil, so I just need more soil to put around the base.
Yep.
So that's easy to turn with water.
We have black, one pile of black dirt back there.
Okay.
And there's also a bunch of wood chips.
I'll take it on.
Okay.
Okay, again, on this street here, I'd like to approve some of the branches off the, there's a cedar tree and some willows in there, anything that's picking up into the blacktop. And you only have to approve them, you know, a 10 feet, I just hope a car or somebody walking. That's all. I don't need them to get in there.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah, do you have a, I was putting on Rainier Park, but they have kids equivalent.
We got all the poles out of there, the cement out there. We're kind of waiting for the contractor to get freed up to set them, so I can pour the footings in on the legs.
So it's in the lines?
Oh, yeah. I'm bugging them daily.
Now, I see you fixed the curb box and it's voided, you're all fitted also.
Yep.
Good. How about the one that, I dug in, we had some issues digging into that home that requested, is it Olson, not that, Perry, is it Olson? Requested that Perry took.
Oh, on 130. On 130. Yeah, they had to put in dual curb stops there, because they already had water bored into the house, and they wanted that new garage to have also that water, sewer, power, natural gas. So we had to run another curb stop around in front of that building, so we had to shut off for that garage as well.
So a question on that, do we give dual services like that? Do we get another hookup fee in that?
Yep, we get a hookup fee plus, I think we supply them meter, but we get a hookup fee and then curbs down hookup fee.
Everything else now is June, so everything ready for the 4th of July, whatever we want to do?
Yep.
Cater, fix, whatever. All right. Good enough then. Nothing else from yet. Do you have anybody else to? Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Jen.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, now we're set. The recognition from the Land Use Plan Commission, and variances requested for 3517 on 130. That's what we were just talking about. There was a deck that he proposed building. They looked at it, they moved it back in four feet farther than what he wanted. And, you know, he wanted it far over into the river, something like that. So, Bert, any comment on that?
The only comment I have is after the meeting, we talked to the contractor that is working for him, and the owner was totally fine with the deck being smaller than four feet. He had no issues with making it smaller.
So, so the other issues other than that, they moved it back the four feet that you wanted. Okay, then we should take this. We have a motion to accept that, Perry?
I'll make that motion.
Paul's second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, approve or deny recognition of Rainier Land Use and Planning Commission for variance request on 3473, coming to row 46. Is that? What was that? What's the 46? Who's that?
That's the property over here where they want to build an addition on.
Rainier Beach.
Yeah, Rainier Beach. They want to build an addition.
Oh.
Olson, right?
Yes.
Darren Neves? Yeah.
Oh, you checked the property line, they go to oversee the property line to get too close. Oh, you know, that's one thing I wanted to tell Mary Ann before we left, but I'll tell the audience. You know, since the council's been here, myself has been here, we've looked at all the building permits that have been applied for in our zoning and commission, and everybody's looked at them, so some of these generational stuff that has showed up in the past and thrown under tables, we are following the rules and making sure that the setbacks are correct. And if not, there's various in place forms, so that we don't have a petition coming for vacation or various in the past. Since then, we haven't had any issues, and we'll go forward. We hope we can leave this and the other council, so that they don't have to make, you know, decisions like that. So, anyway, I wanted to throw that out there. Anyway, so that 3473, get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, we've already went through these vacation issues. So that leaves us to do business. Anything new out there?
Open one.
Nothing new? Motion, Jen?
Motion, Jen?
Paul's second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, thank you everybody for coming.